The League of Women Voters of St. Peter is hosting the forum tonight together with our cosponsors, the St. Peter Herald and the St. Peter Chamber of Commerce. My name is Harriet Mason and I will be the moderator tonight. Carolyn Dobler will assist me and keep me on track. The timers are Kathy Ahern and Pat Kahn. We are all members of the League of Women Voters of St. Peter. The League of Women Voters is a local, state, national, nonpartisan grassroots 501(c)(3) organization that promotes the active informed involvement of citizens in the voting process. The League neither supports nor opposes political parties or individual candidates in any election. This forum is being recorded and will be aired on St. Peter Public Access TV. Tonight we will present questions to the candidates that have been gathered from the audience as well as those submitted in advance. If you have a question for the candidate, please raise your hand and an usher will collect... All questions submitted previously and asked here tonight have been reviewed by the League. All questions submitted this evening from the audience will be reviewed by League member Cindy Olson and Chamber Director Ed V. We will not ask questions that are illegible on a personal matter unrelated to the elective position, unclear, hostile, or that are submitted for the purpose of making a statement rather than gaining information. Questions on one issue or similar issues may be consolidated and rephrased. All questions are the property of the League of Women Voters. Our candidates in order... Our candidates are seated in order they appear on your program. The candidates are allotted one minute for opening statement, one minute for closing statement, and one minute to answer each question. Our timekeepers will keep us on track, holding up a yellow sign when there's 15 minutes left for the answering. Fifteen seconds, yes. And a stop sign when time is up, but you may finish your question. When you go to the polls on November 5th, you are asked to vote for four of the following candidates. Andrew Vanderlinde, Tim Logensgaard, Tracy Stewie, Bill Soderland, Julie Carl Blum, Burnett Volk, Ben Leonard, Mohammed Akadir, Bill Kaut, and Molly Windroff. Since there are so many candidates this year, we will simply go down the line as seated. When I ask a question, I will select the candidate that is to answer first. When that candidate is finished, I will announce the person seated on his or her left. Now we will begin the candidates for opening statements and we're going to start with Andrew Vanderlinde.
Okay. It's a lot of pressure to go first. Thanks for being here, everybody. My name is Andrew Vanderlinde. A lot of people call me Andy. I'm currently a school counselor at Mankato East High School in Mankato. Been a school counselor now, this is my eighth year. Prior to that, I was here in St. Peter at the high school. You know, I am running for school board as a community member of St. Peter. My two daughters are six and four. Just started kindergarten this year, so I want to be part of my community and serve my community in this capacity and I can think of no better way than to support our schools in running for the school board. So again, thanks for having me here tonight.
Thank you. Now, Tim Logensgaard.
Hello, everyone. My name is Tim Logensgaard. I currently work for the state of Minnesota at the Minnesota Sex and Fender Program as the Facility Security Director. It has been my privilege to be on the school board for the last four years. Thank you for allowing me that privilege the past four years. It is an extremely exciting time for St. Peter School as we sit in a beautiful new building, which actually is in its third year. And looking ahead, there's some changes ahead and it's going to be exciting times here in St. Peter. And it's exciting to have 10 candidates.
Thank you. Now, Tracy Stewie.
Hi, I'm Tracy Stewie and I'm excited to be your candidate for the St. Peter School Board. First off, I want to thank the League of Women Voters and the St. Peter Herald and the St. Peter Chamber of Commerce for hosting this event. We all can be informed voters. My husband and I have lived in St. Peter for 18 years. We have four children, one graduate of St. Peter High School, two that are in high school that are in the crowd, and one middle schooler. I've always been actively involved with the school with things like parent council, president of the booster club and things like that. Also, I'm proud to say that I've been on some state level leadership teams. I was appointed by the governor's office through the Commissioner of Education to serve on the Special Education Advisory Panel, which provides guidance to the Minnesota Department of Education with respect to special education. I'm also a graduate of the Partners in Policy Making Leadership Training Program, which is sponsored by the Minnesota Governor's Council on Developmental Disabilities. I have no idea where our timer is. Where's our timer? Oh, 15 seconds left. Okay, so I'm running for school board because I want to be a strong voice for you on the school board.
Thank you. Now, Bill Soderland.
Hi, my name is Bill Soderland. I'm a husband, father, grandfather, pharmacist, businessman, and I'm a dreamer, a big dreamer who knows how to make a big dream reality. I was a kid that barely graduated from high school and I went on to invent medications. I know what it takes to be successful. A magnificent vision, diligent effort, and a passion so powerful that failure ceases to be an option. I believe in our children. I believe in education. I believe in excellence. And as a candidate, I offer my experience and vision and I pledge to work diligently for each and every child. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Julie Carl Blum.
Hi. I just am actually retired from this wonderful school district as a special education teacher for, in this district, 20 years and 21 altogether. So I know what a great district we have and what a great community have. And I know how well everyone has gotten behind the school, this new school is part of it, and the rest of the school district, there's been lots of improvements which have been great. I think that one of the biggest things facing us at the school district level is going to be getting a brand-new superintendent. And I think that's going to be a scary thing, but it's also going to be exciting too. So we have had, my husband and I, Tori and I, have had four children. They all graduated from St. Peter. They all went on to do really well. And I have four grandchildren in this school, so I feel pretty good about that too. So I would appreciate your vote.
Hello. My name's Bernadette Volk. I've lived here in St. Peter now for about 10 and a half years. I married Matt Volk and at the present time, we have legal guardianship of three grandkids, ages 14, eight, and one. So in the last two years that I haven't been working and taking care of grandkids, I've gotten more involved with the school here. Right at the present time, I'm the chairperson for the Native American Indian Advisory Board. We have so far 16 Native children that are actually counted. We need to do a recount because there's some discrepancy on how they're counted and it brings in more money for the community. I came from Wagner, South Dakota. I lived there for 36 years. I was on a Native American Indian Ed Board at our school there for 12 years. I started up and helped get grants with Tohawee Wakan, which was a government grant for children with severe mental disabilities, to bring the counselors and psychologists and everything to them on a reservation instead of traveling two hours to get them to where they needed to be. And I left and came up here after about three years into it, but it was well under control with the rest of the people that worked there. I'm also... Stop already? Oh, my God. Sorry.
Okay, Ben Leonard.
Hi, I'm Ben Leonard. I've been on the school board for 12 years. I have four children. Unlike Tracy's, they're not here because they don't care what I do. I work for the Minnesota Historical Society in Historic Sites and I think this is a big transition for the St. Peter School District. We have four out of seven board positions up for election and we're poised to hire the new superintendent. And so it's an exciting time. I think there's a lot to do, but there's a lot of excitement in that and I'm honored to be a part of your choice this year.
Thank you. Now, Mohammed Abdul Qadir.
Abdul Qadir, yes. That'll be fine. Can you hear me? My name is Mohammed Abdul Qadir. I'm honored to be here tonight and I want to thank the people who organized this forum. I'm a former teacher in Somalia and I have four children attending schools in Sambiri now. Rahma, Rahima, Najma, and Nabil. All of them are today here. Also, three of my children graduated here. My family and I lived here last 12 years and I work MRI. I have strong experience working with people to solve problems. I connect employers with employees. I have troubleshoot issues, barriers, surveys at workplace. So in that way, I have been successfully replaced a lot of employers. I help companies to hire refugees and solve many issues that could cause distress between them. I want to bring my problem-solving skills to help public schools and meet its goal so every child must have a good education and to just give the respect. Thank you.
Bill Kaut.
Good evening. I too would like to thank the sponsors for this event. I think it's a great opportunity for the community to learn the positions of the candidates. No one issue exists that caused me to run for the school board. However, I feel that education is probably the greatest responsibility the local community has and I believe my education and experiences have uniquely prepared me for a position on the school board. For the last 47 years, my wife and I have lived in St. Peter. During that time, I taught at St. Peter High School for 35 years. After I retired from that position, I spent the next 12 years with the Minnesota School Boards Association. I have experienced education from the side of an instructor. I have experienced education from the school board perspective. I feel I'm uniquely qualified to serve you.
Now, we'd like to hear from Molly Windroff.
Okay. Thank you, everybody, for coming. I am a lifelong member of St. Peter and I currently have two children going through the school system, a junior and a sixth grade daughter. I am a member of the Niklet County Pheasants Forever group as well as the Niklet County Fair Board. I have run a support group out of Benedictine for the past eight years, monthly. It's a group that supports caregivers of people who are suffering from dementia. And I'm a nurse by trade, currently working on my doctorate. And I taught part-time at Rasmussen, so I too have learned about some teaching. Love St. Peter, passionate about everything I do, and just looking forward to being on the school board.
Thank you to all our candidates. Now it's time for the question and answer period. And I will remind them that they have one minute to answer each of these questions. Okay, now the first, number one question, and we will start with Tracy Stewie. So here's the question.
Super exciting.
All right, number one. The district will be hiring a new superintendent. What qualifications are most important in the superintendent candidate? What would you like to see the superintendent's priorities be?
Oh, wow. All right, yes, it is kind of an exciting time. A superintendent is somebody that's going to be with the district for years to come. I think we need somebody that has strong community engagement skills to be able to really get to know the community, get to know what our schools are all about. We do have great schools. I mean, people move to St. Peter for that reason. We have great schools. So I feel like we need a leader that's just going to be able to get to know the board. We'll probably have at least two new people on the board and be able to just bring us forward and yeah, I don't know. I hate being the first person, so that's all I got to say about that, but yes.
Okay, Mr. Soderland, would you like to answer that question?
Sure. What I would look for in a superintendent is number one, administration. Do they have the ability to lead the staff and actually accomplish raising the standard within the school? And I'm looking, would look for somebody that can interact with people and elevate everybody. The second thing I want to look for is a community. Essentially, the president of the District 508. And 508 has two cities, Kasodan, St. Peter, and its rural Lassure and Niklet County. And the superintendent has to interact with people from all this area of District 508. And then the third thing I would look for is, does this person have the ability to raise outside funds, get grants, and engage outside forms of revenue? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, Bernadette Volk. Oh, Julie, I forgot Julie.
If you would have passed me, that would have been fine. Actually, I think for our new superintendent, we have had great superintendents. Dr. Olson and Dr. Peterson, and those are the two that I remember from, we've lived here 30-some years. Both of them showed great leadership and that is one thing that we really need to continue on is with the leadership. I think we need someone who has a really positive attitude that can really inspire the staff and encourage them. There's always new initiatives that the staff has to do and sometimes it's like, why are we doing this? And so if they can give a clear vision as to where they're going to lead the district would be a really good thing too. So that positivity, leadership, and the ability to lead is really important.
Okay, now it's Bernadette's turn.
What I think is very important with a new superintendent is from, I came here 10 years ago, but I worked for eight years at Mystic Lake and it was sleep, work, sleep, work. Now that I've been here with my grandchildren and seen what's going on here, Paul Peterson told me at the very first meeting that we had for the American Indian Advisory Board is that 20 years ago, there was mostly middle-class white people in St. Peter. And now the diversity of all the different nationalities that have come around, the superintendent needs to know how to work with people, how to get to know their different backgrounds and their language and everything, and to know that everybody learns differently. You can't just throw a book at people and say, "Read this," because that, the Native Americans especially, we need to hold it, feel it, smell it, taste it, to really learn something. And I think that's one of the most important things is to be able to work with all nationalities that are in our community. Thank you.
Now, Ben Leonard.
Yeah, I think what qualifications are most important? I'd like to see somebody with prior superintendent experience. This is a really, really good job in the state of Minnesota. I'd like to see a proven leader. I want somebody with vision and I want someone who can maintain and build culture. I think in terms of priorities, we have an operating referendum coming up. That person's going to have to create staff relationships and build culture. We're also going to have to work with the city because we educate children and our funding comes from educating children and we need to make sure that we continue to grow and that this city continues to be a great place to raise a family and that means a great school district, but that means housing, that means daycare, that means available jobs.
Thank you. Okay, now Mohammed.
Thank you. I think that that person should be somebody who has strong leadership, somebody who has a very knowledgeable about the change that's happening in our area, has somebody who can reach and talk to the different parts of the community, somebody who thinks out of box, somebody who braids the diversity. That's what I've been looking for.
Thank you. Now, Bill Kaut.
Yes. Undoubtedly, the most important individual that the school board hires, in fact, the only one that it actually hires, is the superintendent. And I believe that the board has to find the person who will be the chief administrator and run the day-to-day operations of the school district. In order to do this, the individual has to be a great communicator. They have to provide good PR for the school district. As Ben said, our finances are based upon students. We need to keep students in this district. So communication with the community, communication with the staff, very important. Secondly, the individual has to be a leader, someone who delegates responsibility, allows individuals to do their job. And thirdly, they have to have a handle on finances. I think it's extremely important to do that.
Thanks. Now, Molly.
Okay. I too think we need to find somebody with strong leadership skills, somebody who's honest and transparent, and somebody who is involved with the community and with working on the funding, just like the rest of us have said.
Okay, now Andrew Vanderlinde.
I would say that my vision for a new superintendent leader in our school district would have the ability to carry on the school's existing vision, but also have their own to bring us into, you know, the next however many years of leadership that that superintendent would provide for our schools. I want that person to be able to have super effective communication skills, reaching every single one of our stakeholders. They are the face of our school district and, you know, lead each one of our buildings and staff. So, you know, having that confidence and the ability to, you know, put forth that PR view at all times and really lead our school district into continuing to build and grow.
Thank you. Now, Tim Logensgaard.
As hard as it is to go first, it's really difficult to go last. It sounds like we've got a good plan to hire a really good superintendent. The only thing that I would add is, I want someone with integrity. I want someone that's honest and, as Molly said, transparent and willing to step up and make hard decisions and talk about hard topics that we're going to have to talk about. And as Ben said, there's an operating referendum coming up and this person's going to have to step up and be a leader.
Thank you. That concludes the answers to the first question. Now for the second question. And for the second question, we will start with Mohammed Abdul Qadir. Okay, the second question. There are a significant number of students who choose to open enroll outside the St. Peter School District and we have students from other districts enrolling in St. Peter. Would you make any changes in the current board policy regarding open enrollment? If so, what would those changes be?
It's a very good question. Really, since I am not familiar about the school board, their decisions, what they did before, but when you look at the issue, you have to think about what's happening, what exactly is causing this problem. So if we can find those issues, then we can, we have to talk about it, we have to discuss everybody who are involved, we have to talk to the community members and see what we can do together and find out the solution. Because only one person cannot make the decision, but my philosophy is to talk to people, find a common solution, then make a decision.
Thank you. Bill Kaut.
Yes, open enrollment is a critical situation as far as attendance and student enrollment counts. I think we need to do whatever we possibly can to attract students to St. Peter School District. Obviously, a building such as this should provide plenty incentive for older students to come into St. Peter. I think it's important that we take a look at the programs and the activities that we offer to all our students in an attempt to attract people into the district. As far as students leaving the district, I think the school district should establish a program where we interview the families of the students that are leaving the district and try and find out the reasons for that decision and correct any difficulties that have caused someone to leave.
Thank you. Now Molly Windroff.
Well, it's even harder to go third. I would have to mirror what both of these gentlemen said. I think it's an issue of not having known what the conversations have been around open enrollment myself personally, I think it's great to hear that people are enrolling from outside of our town, but yes, why? Why are people choosing to go other places? I too would hope that we have a building that would attract students. The way that the students learn here is phenomenal. So yeah, I think it's getting out there and talking to people and finding out, get to the root of the problem.
Thank you. Now it's Andrew Vanderlinde's turn.
I would say, you know, Bill really nailed it in terms of, you know, what is it that our students are staying for and why are students leaving our district? And what can we do to create programs to keep students here in our school district? And again, kind of figure out why students choose to leave or why do families leave and choose to stay, you know, living in St. Peter but attending school elsewhere? So I think it's really important to continue to create programs for our students that attracts young learners to our buildings and keeps our school district thriving.
Thank you. Tim Logensgaard.
Open enrollment, it's interesting. We do and have surveyed families who have open enrolled out of our school district. And those that participate have a variety of reasons why they choose to go elsewhere. Sometimes they're working in other towns and it's easier to bring the kids with. But it's important that we keep offering programs that attract kids and the kids that are here want to stay here. There's good, it's a booming agriculture program that we have here. It's booming arts and this building. It's important that we keep the kids here, that we have here, and offer programs and we continue to ask, why are they leaving? And try and offer those.
Thank you. Tracy Stewie.
All right, open enrollment. So first off, I think it's great that we have choices and we can do that because individual kids do need individual things. I had wrote down right away too, like, why are they leaving? I mean, is it because of one common thing? Is there, I mean, I know that, I personally know there's people who drive like special education services. I have a son with special education and while the program is fabulous, there certainly is areas we can improve. But with that being said, I've talked to plenty people from other schools and trust me, we definitely have it going on a lot better than other people. But I think the thing is, is just to figure out why that is that they're leaving. You're never going to prevent people from, I mean, unless we close it down, which I don't think that's the answer, you're never going to prevent that. People have different reasons for choosing it, so.
Thank you. Now, Bill Soderland, your opinion.
So I think the bigger question is, why do people move to St. Peter? And one of the reasons is because of the school district. And we do have open enrollment and that causes competition and competition's a wonderful thing. It helps us to get better at what we do. We're not going to please everybody as a businessman. In business, I want to attract as many people as I can to what I'm offering and I have to continually look at what it is I'm doing, what do I need to improve, and how do I go to the next level? So I believe as St. Peter, we should start looking at things more from a marketing and a research department, research analysis, and try to figure out what can we do better at. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Excuse me, that, the open enrollment thing, I think it's a, I agree with Tracy. I think it's a really wonderful thing that we have that ability, that we can open enroll. I know that there's not all school districts that allow open enrollment and I think it's great that we do because we can offer things, and we do offer things that are much greater. I think one of the, one of the things that started last year is when we had our community discussions around racial equity and that type of thing, that that was a really good jumping off board for us, so to speak, because I think that there are some underlying issues that I don't know if we can program enough to touch them. But I think that teaching kids to have great interactions, we just need, personally, we need to teach kids social skills because they're not, it's not rubbing off on them. need to teach kids social skills, because they're not, it's not rubbing off on them. So, that's all I have to say about that.
Bernadette?
I think one of the things on open enrollment is, everybody has a right to go wherever they want to go. A lot of times it's because of where the parents work, or the grandparents work, you know, whatever it may be. And I'll just throw it out there, a lot of times it's prejudice. You don't like to be around this color of people, or that color of people, and I think one of the things that the school here needs to do is, for say, like, I'm in the American Indian Advisory Board, there should be more of those, there should be Mexican advisory boards, African advisory boards, Somalis, Asians, you know, whatever we have. And pardon me if I'm saying that wrong, if I'm not politically correct on what everybody wants to be called, but if we can get those to where you get these people, and like, we're on the, our St. Peter and the Blandon Foundation on Leadership with Ethnically Diverse Communities, to try to help people, just try to understand each other, and to get along, because that's a, I'm taking off the flag, to just, you know, work at that part there. I think that has a lot to do, you know, if we can work at the prejudice part.
Now, Ben.
Thanks. I think open enrollment is something that is a fact of life in Minnesota. I think in this district, we have some leaving, but we have some coming in. It's about a zero-sum game, and that's not saying that all students aren't important, but that's just the numbers. We survey all the students, like Tim said, that decide to opt out of the districts, and there's a lot of reasons for that. Some want religious ed. Hopefully, they come back here for high school, if that's not available to them. You know, sometimes it's they start daycare and Mankato, and like I said earlier, those kinds of decisions have a lot to do with students staying in this district, or enrolling to begin with. I think the New Country School is the largest, that's getting the most students from St. Peter, and I think they have a hands-on, project-based curriculum, and I think that we can do things like that at South and North, and at the high school, to help them want to stay.
Thank you. May I remind the audience that if you have a question, please write it down, and the usher will collect it? And we would like to have some questions from the audience? Okay, now we're down to question number three. And Julie Carl Blum will start this question. Okay, question number three. The Greater Mankato Area Diversity Council sends facilitators to teach St. Peter students' grades one through eight about diversity, stereotyping, bullying, and in general respecting others. What additional steps can St. Peter School Board take to ensure the school culture is welcoming and safe for all students?
That's a really good, good question. My whole background is working with emotional behavior disordered kids, and so what you need to teach them are social skills. And the more years that I taught, the more social skills that needed to be taught directly to these kids. And I just really think that you can go and you can, you can talk to them as a whole grade level, or as, you know, K through one, two through four, but if you don't, or if you're not interacting with them in the classroom individually, I think that's where the problem comes in. I know South, and I believe North too, has a top 20, which is a really good social curriculum, but I think we need more, especially for the middle school students and the high school students. They need the ability to be able to work out those problems that they come up with.
Thank you. Now, Bernadette.
The diversity. We, what I've learned in school with my kids and everything, from where I'm from and stuff, because where I'm from, it's native and white, and that's it, there's no other nationalities. But it starts at home, for one. We've, I've seen a couple of issues with my kids. Damien was in seventh grade last year, and one of the teachers said Indians, and he said natives, and he said Indians, he said natives, it went back and forth like that. So I went to the principal, which I'm really good at, but it has to be taught to the teachers also. They need to learn culture training for the teachers as they're training it. Leadership, the Blandon Foundation that I'm in, with the leadership with a diversity, ethnically diverse community, leadership should be started teaching when they're kids, and then they come up. Believing in themselves, believing that they could be leaders, and the politicians and all that other stuff with the community, so we really need to focus on the little ones, encourage it, and teach the different cultures and what they do. And I think everybody gets along once they start learning why they do things like that. Thank you.
Now, Ben.
Right. Ensure that students feel supported and connected to teachers, staff, and other students. Provide more cultural opportunities in and outside of the classroom, and students need to see themselves in the curriculum, in the staff, and in the school board itself. And I think that we're not doing a very good job of showing students, reflecting students in the staff and in the school board, and we have at least an opportunity to fix one of those things pretty soon.
Now Mohammed.
That's a very good question. My daily work is to help immigrants to get a job. So when I meet the employers, I can see when the employers, the top people want to welcome to other people, everything becomes easy. So now, at school level, we have to train all the teachers, staff, about the diversity, and make them ready that they can handle when the situation come up. So, not only for talking to the diversity from the school, from first grade to eight, but to have to be all of the school, high school also to be trained and talk about the diversity. It's a very sensitive issue, so when the management are ready to take that role, it becomes easy, and everybody will learn.
Thank you. Now, Bill.
Eric, could you repeat the question, please?
Yep. The Greater Mankato Area Diversity Council sends facilitators to teach St. Peter students in grades one through eight, and about diversity, stereotypes, bullying, and in general respecting others. What additional steps can the St. Peter School Board take to ensure the school culture is welcoming and safe for all students?
First of all, I don't think we should stop at grade eight. We should continue to reinforce the instruction that they get in those grades. Secondly, I think we need to make sure, and even though it's not part of the question, hopefully, the district is already doing so, but that the staff is receiving the same sort of training. The staff has to encourage all students to be welcoming of one another, and they themselves have to welcome all students to the building. I think the goal of our district should be that every student, no matter their ability, no matter their culture, whatever their differences, wants to come to school every day to learn. And secondly, I think the staff, and I'm not just talking teachers, but all members of the staff, hopefully will want to come every day to relate with those students.
Thank you. Now Molly?
Yeah, I would agree. I think there needs to be a consistent message, starting from kindergarten up through their senior year. And I think it also needs to be a consistent message between the faculty and the staff, and the school board, and the policies that, you know, we come up with too. It's a huge issue. Kids don't feel safe, a lot of times at school. And so it's one of those areas that I'm very passionate about, and we can do better. I've heard stories from people since I've been running, and there are things that we need to fix up a little bit. And I think too, having some cultural diversity-type days, as Ben had stated, and just having more community involvement. Yeah, we're very diverse these days, so it's important.
Thank you. Andrew.
I think it's incredibly important to give every single one of our students voice in their learning, so I'm very highly trained in our sort of practice, and a big piece of that is bringing our students to the table, to the circle really, to give the opportunity for a student voice, and to have their viewpoint, their possibilities heard. So, those are challenging and tough conversations, and sometimes students don't want to use their voice, but we need to give the opportunity to provide that. You know, conversations like this are incredibly tough, but we need to be able to give the students the safe learning environment, the safe space, to be able to have these conversations and learn together about differences. So, again, you know, they're challenging and tough, but we need to give the opportunities for our students.
Thank you. Now, Tim.
I think it's been touched on quite often, but continued training, again, not just one through eight, all the way through, including what Bill said, teachers, administrators, everyone. It's an issue, it's in front of us, we have to do something about it. So, working together will always help, and that's the only way to get through it. And educate not only all the way through those that are involved in these buildings that we have, but the community also, so that everybody is welcoming.
Now Tracy.
Yes, okay, so all students need to feel safe when they go to school, and they need to like school, and they don't need to love school, but they need to like it, and they're not gonna like it if they don't feel safe, and they don't feel respected. So how do we get there? It is, it's a community thing. But you know, there is, I think, the kindness retreat, I don't know if that happens in, like, fourth grade, but we need to do more things like that. I don't know who organizes that, but the kids all go down to Johnson Hall, and it's a big old you rah rah, and we all love each other, but then we don't talk about it again until I think like 12th grade or something. So, we need to do more things like that, we need to start earlier and keep doing it, because if the kids don't like school, and they don't feel safe, they're not gonna learn, and no one's gonna like the test scores then, so.
Thank you. Now, Bill Soderl.
So, when we're talking about diversity, it's a group, it's a group of people, and we look at and analyze things as a group, and as human beings, we do that a lot of times, because it's easier to keep track of groups. And culture, people have a common culture, and they fit into this group. At the end of the day, I think it's wonderful that we do look at culture, we look at people in groups, at the end of the day, it's a relationship one-on-one. There isn't a child that says, that I think, oh, I love the way I'm being interacted with as a member of this group. I think it comes down to, do we have a relationship with the individual child? And I would emphasize that. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes that question number three. Okay, we're going to now do question number four, and we're gonna start with Ben Leonard. Question number four. What are your thoughts on compromise and consensus building? Do you have any examples personally of a situation when you use these tools to resolve conflict or reach a decision? Are you a believer in compromise and consensus building?
All right, well, I think, I can kind of remind you. I think this is something that our school board has been incredibly good at, and has a lot of practice in the years that I've been on the school board. We don't always agree, but you don't see a lot of four-three decisions, and that doesn't mean that we don't have different opinions, and it doesn't mean that we always just are in lockstep with one another, but we find a way to come together to make decisions. And it's really important that the school district and the school board speak with one voice. So, that's not a very good example about any specific things, but I think, to Mark's credit, as school board chair, he's done a really good job. We don't talk about politics, I know that I have very different political views from other board members, but it's really about getting the job done.
Thank you. Now Mohammed.
The question was?
What are your thoughts on compromise and consensus building? Do you have any examples personally of a situation when you use these tools to resolve conflict and reach a decision? Are you a believer in compromise and consensus building?
Yes. My role is always a kind of community bridge, I'm a bridge builder. I always talk about reach the other person, and find a common goal that we can make ourselves understand. So, I don't know, my job is work-related, so I haven't been working with the school board yet, but what I know is, when you reach the other person, or other people, or other side, then you can have a negotiation, and you can talk to them, and you can find a common goal. So always, I will reach and find a common goal, and have a good collaboration for other members.
Thank you. Now, Bill, it's your turn.
I would say I am a firm believer in compromise and consensus. The school board will be faced with numerous decisions, some not so difficult, some very difficult, and I believe that board members have to sometimes put aside their personal beliefs to compromise and decide what's best for the students. The students should be the number one priority of the school district. Once that compromise is reached, then I think you build that consensus. Board members have to support the decision of the board, all right? As far as personal examples, I said I taught for 35 years. During that time, I was both president of the St. Peter Education Association and their head negotiator. You cannot negotiate labor agreements between the district and its employee groups without compromising. So I think I've demonstrated that ability throughout my career.
Now Molly?
Yeah, as a member of the board, it would be very important to be able to compromise with the group. You know, collaborating with a group of people isn't always the easiest, but like we said, we have different opinions. But even already tonight, just listening to the group up here, I think we all are very like-minded, in the sense that we're looking toward the future of the children in this community, and that's what needs to be at the forefront. So, being open-minded, I think, is a, is a big deal, so.
Now, Mr. Vander Linden.
I'm gonna reiterate a lot of what everyone else has said so far. Again, I agree, compromise and consensus is really important as a board, as a governing board of the school district, and, you know, there's decision-making to be done, and there's teamwork within the board. So, again, like what Ben said, you're not always gonna agree with whatever somebody else may have an opinion on, but, you know, we're leading our children in our school district, and when we do come to a decision, it's gonna be incredibly important to support that decision.
Okay, Mr. Loken's card.
Compromise and consensus, I've been married for more than 25 years. I have three children, and two-thirds of them are certainly very stubborn. So I'm a firm believer in compromise and consensus, as I think most of us are. And I think, reiterating, we make decisions based on what's best for the kids, and not just some kids, all the kids. So, we are always, as Ben said, looking to make sure that we're in agreement, that what we're doing is for the, doing the right thing for the right reason, and that right reason always comes back to the kids. Thanks.
Okay, now Tracy.
Tim, you kind of stole my line, because I was gonna say I'm the mom of four, so I kind of like have like a master's degree in compromise and consensus, but anyways, the example I would have is, I am the president of the newly formed, well, going on year three of the Athletic Booster Club. Prior to this, we had soccer, basketball, not hockey, to confuse them, softball, everybody kind of had their own booster clubs. Well, we came under one umbrella. So what happens when you get about 15 coaches, and a bunch of parents, and student athletes, and you have like $58,000 to divvy up? Well, now what do we do? So year one, we had to sit down and decide, how are we gonna divide up that budget? And being the president, I had to kind of lead people through this process, and I said, regardless of what we decide, no one's probably gonna be 100% happy, but when we leave this room, we all have to be of a consensus. We did a really good job of that in year one, and we're working a little bit harder on it this year, but it's very important to, regardless if I disagree with Tim, or he disagrees with me, which would never happen, but that we would leave the room, and all be in agreement, so.
Thank you. And Bill?
So, I've been in business since 1982, so it's a daily occurrence to negotiate in various transactions, interacting with groups of people, and coming to a consensus. I think the one thing that I don't want to compromise on is integrity or ethics and competency. And when I say competency, if I'm in a situation, and I'm being asked to give my opinion, if I have I haven't done the research on it, integrity would be to let people know, I haven't done a thorough examination of that. So, there are things to compromise, everything's negotiable, with the exception of ethics, integrity, competence. Thank you.
Now, Julie.
I think that compromise and consensus, as everyone else has said, is very important. And I think that we always do need to have in front of us what is going to be best for the kids. And we might not always agree, but I was president also of the teachers' union for several years, and I was also on negotiations. And I think the last two negotiation rounds were great examples of consensus and compromise, as we negotiated the last two contracts.
Thank you. Now, finally, Bernadette.
Compromise and concession. I think this group, for as important as it is, and how many people are involved, and that we're making decisions, we all have to come together and voice your opinion, state your case, but you have to be able to bend, you know, and get along with each other. And once you make that decision, at the end of the night, or however long it takes you, don't run out and say, oh, I don't like that, she's stupid, or he says dumb things, you know, don't go out and start bad-mouthing the other people. You have to get along as a family, as a group, when you're making these very important things for the whole, and say, like, your whole family is the city of St. Peter, you're trying to do the best you can, you know, as a mother of many, and many grandkids, you do the best you can, you're not going to make everybody happy, but you're doing it for the best interest of the whole town and the community. And I think that's what everybody agrees on in this kind of board.
Thank you. Now, we will take a question that came from the audience this evening. And unfortunately, Bernadette's going to start this one. Didn't plan it that way, but, okay. The question is, how can the school board address attracting and hiring qualified teachers, substitutes, and paraprofessionals?
Are we talking of people of color?
Well, it didn't say, I'll just read the question again. How can the school board address attracting and hiring qualified teachers, subs, and professionals?
I think probably in general, that the school does, you know, well, on getting the people they have, you have to go for their qualifications and stuff, but I know, like, from where I'm from, if the children see people of color in the school teaching them, then they have a tendency of being, feeling more welcome. You have to have, you know, a variety of different nationalities in the school to make everybody feel. And the only thing you could do, like we did, is you hit colleges and stuff, you know, to hit the ones that have more. There's a college in Kansas for Native Americans, there's a college in Bismarck with, you know, for Native Americans, but you hit those kind there and all over the place, and try to get as many as you can to come in. And you don't want to say you just want people of color, but that should be something, when I first met here, I'll do it really, really quick. When I first came here, they got that, oh, I drew a blank, but on the front of an application for a job, you got a thing that says, this will not affect your hiring, but what nationality are you? So, I'd always check Native American. I never got an interview for about 30 positions, until one day I checked white, and I got an interview, and I got the job. So, you kind of have to watch those things, you know, when you're hiring people, you know, you really don't want to discourage that part. Sorry.
Okay, Ben?
One, I think, same thing we all want, a competitive wage that looks good in the region. I think culture, if our own staff isn't promoting, this is a great place to work, we're going to be in real trouble. And that includes great leadership at our schools and at our district level. In terms of diversity, I think partnering with MSUM, which we are, to look at student teachers, and how can we recruit folks and students of color who want to be teachers, and work with them through the process. We've hired a lot of student teachers in the last few years. And then we have student liaisons this year, and I want to continue that and grow that. So, we have a student liaison to work with the Somali community and the Latinx community.
Mohammed?
Thank you. So, first, number one is recruitment. Where we post our positions, where they are available. It's only nowadays, only, you can find only for the school, the school district current jobs. So, do we post other areas, that people can see that there is open positions? Also, the wages, I agree with Ben. So, and most of the paraprofessionals, they are working only 6.5 hours, and they don't get paid the same like a teacher. So, we need to look at that, too. So, then, also, to give them a benefit, so they can stay, and they can contribute.
Now, Bill?
Yes, I think there are four factors that play into this, and I would amend the question to also add the word retain. How would we attract, hire, and retain good-quality employees? I agree, pay is important. We need to be competitive. We need to have competitive salaries with all the other districts within the area. I need, I think we need to work with the city, so that there's good, affordable housing available to attract people coming into the community. Third, I think we need to promote jobs, jobs for spouses. I think that would be an important attraction for individuals. And finally, to have available childcare. And I finally finished before you had to put up the red.
Now, Molly?
I would agree with all of those things. I think marketing of our district and community to potential teachers, the competitive wage, the culture, like you said, in retaining, making sure that the culture within our schools is one that teachers want to be in, and one that they want to strive to be better. And then partnerships with the colleges, maybe not just Mankato, but seeking out beyond that, and getting those students in here to do some work.
Thank you. Now, Andrew?
Yes, thank you. Yes, I would say, to find and retain quality teachers, you know, the competitive pay thing is huge. You know, wanting to recruit teachers to work in our school district, and stay in our school district, do those teachers feel supported in what they're doing in our schools? Do our students see themselves in their teachers, and in the curriculum that our teachers are teaching? What does our school culture look like to the community? When we have prospective people moving to St. Peter, do they see and hear things that they want to hear from our community members on what our schools are like? Do they want to come and work for our schools? So, again, a big thing is recruiting and retaining these teachers. I know teacher burnout is huge as well. How do we keep those teachers here and feel supported in our schools?
Thank you. Now, Tim Loken Scott?
St. Peter's a great place to live. 51 years I've lived here, it's exciting. We always have a lot of candidates for our jobs, for some of them, some of the specialized ones, we don't. But, again, you heard an awful lot about recruitment, Mankato State, Gustavus, surrounding colleges, ensuring that we're using the resources that are around us to get the quality candidates that we need, not only for teachers, but for subs, for paras, and then ensuring that our community is a place where they want to stay. I think we're a great place to live, and I've raised my family here because of it.
Now, Tracy, you're, we need to do this, but can you repeat the question, because I just want to make sure that...
Yes. How can the school board address attracting and hiring quality, qualified teachers, subs, and paraprofessionals?
Okay, so, I wanted to see, like, we're talking employees in general, or teachers, because when we think about school employees, we generally think mostly about teachers. And I just think we do need to remember those custodial office support paraprofessionals and food service employees, because, yeah, whatever, they might not think much about it, but I can tell you today, when Mr. Jeff, the janitor, went and fixed Ben, my Ben's locker handle, that made his day. And so, he is a very important employee for the school. And if that person that's getting that absence slip is going to be greeted by a nice smiley face, that's going to make that kid's day. As far as teachers, okay, happy wife, happy life, happy teacher, happy schools. So, how can we keep our teachers happy? I think keeping them involved in the decision-making process, having them feel supported without putting busy work on them. I happen to be married to a teacher, so I might have some insight on this. And then, of course, competitive pay. I don't personally know how, I mean, we stack up with other districts with our pay. My husband's been teaching for a long time, so we're okay, but I don't know how, like, at the bottom of the pay scale with a new teacher, if we're competitive. And I'm stopping.
Now, Mr. Soderland, it's your turn.
So, I spent probably 300 hours researching, interviewing, and looking over the school district, and an area that we're just doing an abysmal job on. It's a horrible job, it's embarrassing, it's with the paraprofessionals. There's so many open positions right now that we can't fill. I've interviewed teachers, paraprofessionals, we're doing a lousy job. There is a way to fix that, and it isn't that difficult, I don't believe, but we are kind of stuck in the mud, and I think somebody needs to step in here and say, you know what, paraprofessionals are very important, we need to step up here and fix this issue, and it's not that difficult. Thank you.
Okay, Julie?
Well, I'm going to agree with Bill there. When I first, when we first moved here, I got a job, and I was really glad to get a job with the school district, because it was a premium-type job. Everybody wanted to work for the school district, because it had the best pay, you got your summers off, you were home when your kids were home. It was the ideal job. It is no longer the ideal job, because these paraprofessionals are now working two or three jobs, so that they can make ends meet. The pay, when I was working as a paraprofessional 25 years ago, was $8 an hour. They start at 11:10 now. You do the math on that. We need to do something about that. We cannot keep good paraprofessionals, and I'm really passionate about that, sorry, but I am.
Thank you. We will go on to the next question, and Bill Coughton will start this one. We've all seen stories of incorporating more technology into classrooms. What are your thoughts on technology in the classroom? Is there a line drawn with too much technology?
You know, that's an interesting question, and I have mixed feelings on that. We hear study after study after study about our kids, especially younger kids, having too much screen time, yet we see a movement among many schools to go one-on-one with technology, with their own personal devices. I have some problems with that, and I'd like to see some studies, and whether or not that impacts the development of our students. When we get into the high school, I believe that we have to be able to have technology at the forefront of our students' education. When they leave St. Peter, they cannot be behind other students when they go on to either career choices, the military, or higher education. So, technology is important there.
Molly Windroff, what's your answer?
I would agree that technology is very important. Somebody from the board, please help me remember what that machine is that we, you guys just decided to purchase? Yeah, like, how cool is that? So, to know that our students get to learn about that technology, that I don't even know really what it is, it's amazing to know that we have those opportunities in St. Peter, and I think that's one of the things, too, that will get teachers here and get students here. So, I think it's a huge deal. We have to be competitive as we leave the school, as 12th graders going into college, so.
Mr. Vanderlinde.
Yes, I think there's a big line between having the technology and using it effectively. Do our teachers and our staff and our buildings know how to use the tools that they're giving to our students, and the things that our students have in their hands, that they're able to experiment with and try new things with? Is that enhancing their education? Is that enriching their education? It's not a replacement, it's purely to enhance and enrich the education for our students. So, have it or use it effectively is a big piece.
Mr. Loken Scott?
I don't believe technology is going away, so I think, as Bill said, there's a balance there between too much screen time, is there too much, maybe at a younger age, just starting it. I think it's imperative that we embrace the technology that we have, use it as a resource. It helps our kids. Our, one of our big focus that's, right now, is career and college readiness. There's some kids that don't go to college, and what, and providing them opportunities to learn on the CNC machine, to learn in the agriculture science area, to learn computer software skills. Those are just as important as those going to college.
Tracy? All right, technology, kind of interesting, I was sitting here thinking, my daughter, who was a senior this year, I remember when she was in first grade, South Elementary had a couple rooms that had smartboards, and that was like, very cool. We have, I think, I can safely say we have a smartboard in every classroom, because I know there's even some like in the cafeteria. So, we definitely, our kids are growing up with technology, they have it when they're very, very, very young. I think what we need to do is teach them how to use technology responsibly. And I know that the high school this year is doing a trial with putting cellphones even into some cell pouches, and I know I'm not winning any votes for my kids at this, but I think that's great. And I've talked with some of the teachers, and the interaction that they're seeing with each other, instead of like, having this phone, I mean, I mind here now, because I'm looking at the time, but I just think we need to, you, teach them how to use technology responsibly. They know how to use it a lot better than we do, it's them using it responsibly. The end.
Mr. Soderland?
So, I've written several articles that you can look up on billsoderlandforschoolboard.com. It gives us some additional information, but in general, technology is a tool, it's not a crutch. And I think, when we get to the point where we can start looking at that and saying, that's a crutch, that person, the child, the adult, doesn't know how to do what they're trying to do, what the cellphone does, or the calculator, I think we've crossed the line, and it's becoming a crutch, and it's a replacement for thinking, and interacting, and actually experiencing. So, I think we just need to remember, is this a tool, or is this a crutch? If it gets to be a crutch, we need to address it. Thank you.
Andrew, Carl?
Yes, because I worked in the elementary schools, I saw a lot of technology, and to me, it's being used really well. What I've read on the scientific studies, Bill, is that you want to make sure that infants to age two at least, or three, those synapses are starting to make connections through your brain, and if you're using a lot of technology with your kids, they make a shortcut, and then that's leading to ADHD and ADD, and kids not being able to focus. So, I think by the time the kids are in kindergarten, those synapses have developed a lot further than what they would be if they were younger. And I see kids really engaged, and what I love is, there's a couple of programs, there's a reading program and a math program that's being used, and they will do some testing, and wherever the kids are at, it takes them to the level they're at. So, they don't have to learn stuff they already know. I think that's awesome, because it keeps them engaged.
Bernadette?
Okay, technology is in the classroom. Since I've had my grandkids, I mean, we never had it when we was growing up, for as old as I was, and my kids didn't really get into it until they got more in middle school and stuff. They didn't have it in the grade schools. And from my grandkids coming up, taking them to the eye exam, and the doctors check their eyes for blue light, and how much damage it might have done already to their eyes, and having them in counseling, do the trauma that they had, and why we got them. There's a mental addiction thing that's already been classified in the counseling for addiction to games and stuff. So, the good, and the bad, and the ugly, yes, they do need it and stuff, but even like my one-year-old, she's a year and a half, I asked the foster mom if she let her play on their phone, because this kid knows how to scroll, and how to enlarge things. And she's always fighting me for my phone, and I thought, are you crazy? But they have to have it. I mean, it's just the way the world's going, it's just, you got to control it. I've already had a teacher call me today, or text me, and saying that my son's in trouble, grandson's in trouble, because he had his phone out in school. So, I said, oh, we're going to take it away, and he said, well... And he said, well, what about her? She uses hers in school, too. So, it's kind of around those things. Thank you.
Okay, Ben.
We need to prepare students to succeed in the world. Technology allows us the opportunity to access the world from the classroom and access the classroom from home on a snowy day. That said, technology, from a teaching perspective, isn't the lesson. It's not about using technology. It's about using technology as a tool to teach the lesson in a different way, and it has to be equitable.
Thank you. Technology is very, very important, and nowadays, you cannot live without it. So, if that's the case, why don't we provide a lot of technology for the kids? So, they can learn. I think they can engage when they have their laptops, when they have their, using their technology. So, but what I would like to see is, there are some people who are, cannot afford to buy things. So, I would like to see the school provide the bookies for Chrome, so they can use when they go home. Because many of us, we can afford to buy, but there are some people who doesn't, cannot afford. So, we want the schools to provide for these children, so they can, when they go home, they can compete and they can learn more.
Thank you. We will go on to the next question. And this question, Tim Locensgard will start. Okay, the question from the audience is, how would you handle the upcoming referendum without putting more tax burdens on the community?
That one's gonna be a tough one. Currently, right now, the referendum, the taxpayers' burden is around $900 per household, roughly. And we're about $200 short of average in our area and in our same school district size. So, we've had the opportunity of learning what a new building, an extra building, costs to the school district, and we're about $800 short, $800,000 short per year right now. So, without cutting programs and without affecting the kids and what they have right now, I don't see a way around new tax money. But certainly, I'm open to ideas. I'm sure all of us are, and we will work to get it done.
Excellent job, Mr. Locensgard. All right. So, is it okay if I go? Yes?
Yes.
All right, great. Now, you can start my time. So, well, it's not a simple answer. Let me just say that. I think we would, you can't really pass, because you said to pass, like, to repeat the question, because I think it's a trick question.
How would you handle the upcoming referendum without putting more tax burden on the community?
Okay, yes. So, yeah, so I think we just have to look at the current budget. We have to look at our student growth, and I think, like, it isn't a decision that's just made with one person. As I was getting ready for this tonight, and kind of like, oh, my gosh, and I'm like, you know what? I know what I know, and I don't know what I don't know. So, I'm telling you what I know. And what I know is, is we would have to do a lot of research. We would need to collaboratively talk with each other. We'd have to look at the budget. We'd have to get the input and look at our student growth and all of those things, and then realize, too, that we have an additional building. We have a middle school program, but is it worth it? I think it's worth it. I mean, does it cost money? Because we have all these extra elective classes now that we're offering for middle schoolers, it's gonna cost money. But I think it's worth it, and I would hope the community would as well.
Thank you. Now, Bill Soderland.
So, if I'm elected, the first thing I'm gonna do Wednesday morning is, I'm gonna call Tim Regner up, who's the chief financial officer, excellent guy, I really respect him. And I'm gonna say, Tim, get a lunch pail and a sleeping bag, because I'm gonna do a deep dive, and I'm not coming up until I understand every nuance and detail within this budget and the finances in the school. This is very complex, and I spent a few hours doing an overview. So, anybody that speaks about what's going on behind the scenes, I don't think they get it. I'm gonna go in there, and I'm gonna do a deep dive. And if there are ways to reduce redundancy, increase efficiency, I'm a businessman. I look at things, and I'll figure something out, and I'll be able to come and tell you what's happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Julie.
Well, this is a good question. It's one I've thought about. Farm prices are not what they were, and farmers this fall are struggling to get their crops out of the field, and they will struggle with the prices as it is, too. I come from a farming background, so I understand all of that. I think one of the things, and I know that the school board does this already, I think we just need to continue to lobby the legislature to make the funding more equitable among school districts. The city schools get way more money than we do in outstate. And I think we need to continue to lobby our legislators to make something, make a law, make something that it's more equal among all districts. So, that's not a good answer, but it's, I understand where we're coming from.
Bernard, vote.
Okay, on the referendum. This is one, I'll be honest, I have no idea what's going on out there with the money and the taxes or anything. I'm not experienced on the financial part of the school. I had a gentleman on my Facebook thing that I had, he asked me as a paraprofessional what I was gonna do in the line of their salary or their pay on the referendum, raising taxes and stuff. And I said, honestly, I can't answer that. I don't know the ins and outs of what's going on. I said, I'll have to get in there, research it, see. I used to have a grocery store years ago, and I said, I ran it from scratch, and made it into a $1.5 million food service thing. And it's something that you have got to pay attention to the bottom line on what kind of money is in there, where you could take this from, where you could take that from, and just continue building your business and stuff, which you'd have to do here. So, I cannot come out and just give you an answer and say, oh, we're gonna do this, or we're gonna have to raise the taxes, because I don't know that. I'd have to research. Thank you.
Bill? Ben?
It's okay. I think the school district, for the most part, has to go to the voters to generate more revenue and raise your taxes. We can't just do that. And so, I think that's really important. The city, the county, they can just raise your taxes. So, we're always gonna have to come to you with a plan, and you're gonna have to decide whether you support that or whether you don't support it. Whether I can promise to have a referendum without putting more burden on the taxpayers or raising your taxes, we can't. Every, that said, every local dollar that we generate is matched with state dollars. So, you're not just giving us a dollar, you're buying additional dollars from the state in matching aid. Enrollment is the most important thing. So, if we have growing enrollment, that really helps our budget. If we have stagnant enrollment or declining enrollment, we can tax you to the cows come home, we'll still be in trouble, so.
This is a very serious question about when you look at the depth of what we want to accomplish. As a homeowner, I know the taxes goes increased, and also the same thing, the families also get increased more and more and more. So, everybody is kind of worried about when this kind of issue come up. So, what I'd like to see is to find different areas, for example, the, find different areas that you can get more money and can help our need. If you look at the school now, we are now, this one, is very great. You can see that contributing some small money, then this is, you can get this, something like this. If we want to do more like that, so we have to sacrifice a little bit more.
Now, Bill.
Well, I have to agree with what the previous responder said. You cannot increase the levy and pass an operating referendum without raising taxes. The only way you wouldn't raise taxes is if you did not pass the referendum. If you don't pass a referendum, you have to find the money elsewhere. So, it either comes out of your fund balance, which is dangerous, because you can only spend that dollar once. It's not a recurring amount. Secondly, you have to go through, as Bill mentioned, and look at every current expenditure and justify that expenditure. If you, as Tracy talked about, if you want programs, if you want the additional paraprofessionals, if you want these things for your children, then you have to pass the referendum.
Molly.
That's what I was gonna say. I think, I do. I think we have a great community. We have a great school system, and we want to keep that going. The only way to do that is to start paying the paraprofessionals, to start, I mean, we have to put the money in, unfortunately. And as a member of the community, and a taxpayer and a homeowner, I think it's important that my children are gonna get some of the best schooling around.
Now, Andrew.
Yeah, I think, you know, reiterating what everybody else has said, too, and what it comes down to, back when we worked on the Vote Yes Committee for this beautiful, brand-new building, the biggest pieces of it were communicating the information that we were discovering, researching with all stakeholders in the community, so they understand where those dollars are going and what those dollars are needed for. So, you know, as a board, it is gonna be imperative to communicate that with stakeholders, whatever decision they do make. And, you know, I think it's a really important piece to keep our schools moving forward. So, it's just gonna be communicated and worked hard with our community to support it.
Thank you. This concludes our question-and-answer period, and we're asking each candidate for a closing statement. It'll be one minute long, and we're gonna start with Julie.
I think we have 10 really good candidates up here, so it's gonna be hard for you people to decide what to do. It'll be hard for me to decide who to vote for. Thank you, Women's League of Voters, and the Chamber, and the Herald for sponsoring this again. I'm excited about where our school has been, and where it's now, and where it's gonna go. And so, I like to look towards the future and see what we're gonna get to. And so, yeah, I'd love you to vote for me, and we'll see where we go.
Bernard.
Okay, we'll try to keep it short here. I'll finish what I started at the beginning. I'm part of the Bonded Foundation with the leadership of diversity in our communities and stuff, and that would be something that I would really push, you know, if I was elected on a school board. I'm also, I belong to the grandparents of Minnesota, to where growing, there's a growing rate of grandparents who are raising grandkids. And in the technical thing in the schools and stuff, you've got to realize that we never had that when we was kids. And so, when teachers throw it out, say, oh, you gotta go download this and do this with that, us grandparents don't know how, and they don't have any idea, you know, how you even talk to us, because that's the only thing they know also. So, we need to have a little, you know, mixture right there, and try to work with us and figure these things out for the school. But that's what I want to do with the school, if I was on the school board, is try to get everybody into it, you know, besides, you know, us older folks, you know, the younger ones, and the students, and the people of color and everything like that, to stand up, you know, and just say, okay, we're gonna listen to you. And I'll be really short at this. But that's what, that's my goal, to be on the school board. Thank you.
Ben Leonard.
Well, thank you, League of Women Voters, the Herald, Chamber of Commerce. Thanks for all of you for coming out and listening to us. I really appreciate that. I'm very proud of this school district. The next superintendent is getting a premier job in a fantastic community, and I am just so lucky to have been a part these last 12 years. And the decisions that we were making on the school board when I started were drastic and tough. And our district has grown and blossomed, and we're making fund decisions, for the most part these days, about buying plasma cutters and providing opportunities that we really want our students to have. And we should all be proud of that. And it's exciting, and I would love to have another four years to be a part of that.
Mohammed.
Thank you. I'm proud of what you say. So, I'm so glad I'm here today, and I'm so happy that I'm participating in this debate. And when I look, about 10 years ago, when I moved here, I didn't know anybody. So, I was struggling to understand the system. I was kind of, every time, I need some help, whatever I'm doing. So, things change. The demographics changed. So, there are so many talented people moving in in the community, and I would like to be part of that. So, I would, I wanna add, if I've been elected for the school board, I will add problem-solving. I can help create good environment in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Bill Coughton.
Yes, I, too, would like to thank the sponsors for this evening. I'd like to thank all of you who attended this event. The fact that you were willing to sit here for an hour and a half and listen to us says something about your commitment to the community. I hope that the fact that I had three sons graduate from St. Peter High School, and 47 years of experience as a teacher, counselor, dean of students, working with the Minnesota School Boards Association as an associate director of management services, where I specialized in strategic planning, also worked with members of the Ed Minnesota Central Office in collaboratively presenting presentations on the teacher development and evaluation plan, will convince you that I am qualified for this position.
Thank you. Now, Molly.
As I have all night, I'll keep it short and sweet. I'm passionate about St. Peter, passionate about our school system, love living here. And I just, if I'm elected, I promise to take concerns that you have to the board and bring them with an open mind and consider them all. Like Julie said, I think, I think we're a lucky community to have 10 of us that are so in love with our community and school system that we want to run. So, yeah, it's gonna be hard to choose, even for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, Andrew.
Thanks again, sponsors for hosting this evening, and thank you for all being here. I'm just super excited to represent St. Peter, potentially, on the school board. I came here, I'm an educator at heart. I'll work in a school my entire life. And so, the biggest piece of it is I want opportunities for our children to live and grow and do exactly what they want to do when they make their adult decisions. And, you know, as an educator, as a parent, and a community member, I'm just super excited to potentially represent our community for school board. So, thanks again for tonight.
Tim.
I also want to thank the co-sponsors for this evening, and especially the large turnout that we've had. It's awesome. Again, St. Peter is a great place to live. It's a great place to work. It's a great place to raise a family. I have had three children go through St. Peter High School. I've gone through St. Peter High School, and there's passion from all 10 up here, and good luck in your voting. We'll see you on November 5th.
Thank you. How about Tracy's doing?
All right. Well, that was a lot of information. So, here's the deal. So, I have a lot more I'd like to share, and so afterwards, I'll be out in the comments area if anybody wants to talk, or I'd love to have a cup of coffee with you. We have a lot of choices, some great candidates up here. I guess we're here to say why we think we're the best choice. And for me, it's, I have a lot of skin in the game. You know, my husband teaches here, so I have good contact with teachers and good relationships there. I have three kids that are currently in the system, a graduate, so I know the importance of an education and what that's gonna take beyond here. And then, the number one reason is, is because I just really, really want to. And so, with that being said, I will work hard, and I'll be committed, and I'll be a strong, strong voice for you. So, please vote.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Soderland.
So, I have studied success my entire adult life. I know what it takes to be successful. I know that success is not a random event, but a magnificent vision, a big dream followed by massive diligent effort that makes a dream reality. I have a big dream and a magnificent vision for our school. I believe we can defy the odds. I believe we can defy the odds. I believe we can set a new standard. I believe we will become an exemplary school district. I believe in our children, I believe in education, I believe in excellence, I believe in us, and I believe we can do this. Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes our forum for this evening. I'd like to thank the candidates for sharing their thoughts on the issues. If we ran out of time before we could ask your question, please contact the candidates directly. I hope they stick around for a few minutes this evening. This forum will be aired on the St. Peter Public Access TV. Please check your schedule for the time. I'd like to thank our partners, the St. Peter Herald and the St. Peter Chamber of Commerce, my assistant, our timers, our volunteers, the film crew, and of course, the candidates and the public who came out this evening. Last but not least, vote on November 5th. You can vote absentee by mail or in person at the courthouse. The deadline for registering before the election is today, so therefore, you won't be able to register by paper anymore. However, if you go home, you can still register online until 11:59 tonight. Starting tomorrow, you may register and vote in the courthouse. Please check your election information on the Secretary of State's website, which is Thank you, and thank you for coming. Good job.